Good afternoon and welcome to the February 16th, 2021, Lone Tree City Council Study Session. We do have a very full agenda today and we've got a number of speakers. And again, I'll remind anybody joining us via conference call, if you could press star six, so you are muted and then you can press star six when you are ready to present. Beating access today will be conducted as a virtual meeting held electronically in accordance with council adopted policy number 20-01. Therefore, members of the public will access this meeting electronically. Since this, again, I am hearing a couple conversations, so I would just respectfully request that anybody who is not speaking could mute. And if you are on the phone, you can mute by pressing star six. Thank you so much. And again, so since the city council does not vote during our study sessions, this our presentations are for information and discussion. Therefore, there is no public comment during study session. Rest assured, our council meeting will include public comment this evening. So as I indicated, very full agenda, we're going to start it off with a presentation from CDOT on the regional mobility hubs and partnership opportunities with the city of Lone Tree. We could not be more excited to welcome the folks from CDOT. I want to say a huge thank you to them. And I'm going to turn it over to our Public Works and Mobility Director, I believe, Justin, for a brief introduction before CDOT begins. Justin, is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor. Thank you very much. So good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Tonight, we have an exciting opportunity to have a presentation by our great partners at CDOT. The city of Lone Tree has been able to partner on many successful projects recently with CDOT. We've also been able to secure a lot of future funding for the next four to five years on several projects with CDOT. And so we're really excited today to have them come and present about a unique and exciting opportunity that the city of Lone Tree and CDOT staff has been starting to look into in regards to the opportunity for a regional mobility hub to be located somewhere within the city of Lone Tree. So I'm going to kick it over to David Krunzinger, who is the Director of Division of Transit and Rail for CDOT, who's going to be our presenter tonight. I will be on the call as well as Dan Raine, who has been working on this from the city staff if there are any questions that come up as we continue. David, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you loud and clear. So I'm going to kick it over again to David to run us through this great presentation. Thanks for being here, David.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, and Justin. Appreciate the opportunity. We'll go briefly, I believe Jay's got our presentation. Thank you. And we'll, we'll go briefly through this and I'll turn it back to Justin and the mayor if there's any questions among council members. Next slide, please. So we're going to briefly review Senate Bill 267 Transit Funding, CDOT's overall mobility hub program, talk about some analysis we've done within the city of Lone Tree in coordination with staff, and then look to, look to you all for some discussion on our recommended location and some next steps we'd like to take together. Next slide, please. I have with me also Cary Di Giacomo from Region One, CDOT Region One, who may chime in or add things if, if there's additional information that the council and the mayor need. So Senate Bill 267 was legislation passed in 2017 that allowed the state to issue certificates of participation, basically issue loans against our buildings, sort of like a second mortgage that you might take on a house over a period of years. So we're receiving installments of this funding over a four-year period. We are, have two years out of the four years issued so far with two more years potentially to go, and those are subject to the legislation. Transit receives 10% of all the funding and 25% of the funds go to rural counties with 75%, up to 75% spent in the urban areas. We created a formula based on transit services to distribute those around the state. And we've got three different types of projects that are recommended by our Transportation Commission. We've got some CDOT-only projects such as a bus staying, storage and maintenance facility. We're building one down in Colorado Springs right now. Those are ones that basically only CDOT uses, and so we wouldn't ask you all to fund those things. We've got large projects that are sort of a once in a decade, once in a generation type of opportunity that our traditional funding sources don't allow us to participate in. And so we asked for partners to try to meet us at 50/50 on those. And the rest of this discussion that we'll have on this slide deck is in this category. And then we've got a grouping of smaller projects, usually under about a $3 million amount that we would put out there to try to help local agencies who have facilities that they own get those off the ground. So that's a little background, how we're trying to distribute the funds. Next slide, please. This is a quick snapshot vision of the I-25 corridor. We have a similar vision for the I-70 mountain corridor, but I won't get into that for today's purposes. You can see we've got 18 mobility hubs that we're trying to implement. About 10 of those are in existence today. And we're trying to bring on three more by 2023, more if we can. The one's in the planning and design in progress includes you all. The DTC Mobility Hub/Lone Tree is you all number two in the planning and design progress. And then we've got a couple under construction that I'll mention a little bit later as examples of how we might move forward. And then we've got a fair number that are operational, but also might need expansion in the future. Big picture, we're trying to provide express bus service at 10-mile spacing up and down the front range. So that's, that's how you get 18. It's about 180 miles, Fort Collins to Pablo, and 10-mile spacing gives you 18 mobility hubs. Next slide. So when we work to partner with, with local communities, we, we work to align with local community goals. This is not about CDOT coming in and dropping infrastructure in somebody's backyard without their permission. This is all about working on creating places together and developing things that work for our citizens, our employers, employees, and visitors to our communities. So on the left are some of the Lone Tree Comprehensive Planning Principles and Master Plan Objectives, and on the right, CDOT Mobility Hub Goals. In the earlier version of this slide, we tried to draw lines between the things on the left and the things on the right, and it became a very confusing thing. I guess suffice it to say, we've got a lot of goals in common together, and we look forward to working with you in partnership. Next slide. So what do we mean when we talk about mobility hubs? They can be big or small. They can have lots of elements or fewer elements. This is an illustration of an interchange-based mobility hub with parking, public space, other amenities which could be open space or could be other things like bicycle and pedestrian facilities, TOD opportunities. On the opposite side, we try to connect both sides of the highway. And then we usually have the traditional things you think about associated with bus service, shelters and places for people to sit, wind screens to keep people out of, out of, out of the weather, and then all the local connections, local bus service connections, local bicycle and scooter share parking. On the lower right part of the screen, this illustration shows a median center station. That's one way of configuring it. We can also configure it with the station, if you will, on the outside of the lane, depending on where it goes. Next slide. So Lone Trees, the reason for looking at a mobility hub in Lone Tree, you all are on the perfect 10-mile spacing, 10 miles north of Castle Rock and about 10 miles south of other stations that we have in the network. So you all have a, have a perfect place. You have lots of employees and lots of growth. We know that people are likely to use the service based on past history of bus staying ridership. We know that we can provide reliability because of, and options for people to combat, if you will, highway closures and other congestion delays and unreliability that's experienced on the system, giving people the opportunity to work onboard the buses with Wi-Fi restrooms, plugins for their phones, and bike racks on the front. So transit is a part of the solution. It's not the only solution. We're not trying to take people's cars away from them. We are trying to just provide another arrow in the quiver, if you will, for people to be able to get to work, to enjoy the places that they like to be. And Lone Tree is one of those places. This is consistent with the I-25 Planning Environmental Linkage Study to eventually, I guess the vision is to extend managed lanes north to give a reliable, very time-efficient trip all the way up into the tech center. Next slide. So I think you all are familiar with the American Community Survey, which is the census snapshot that they take every single year. Got lots of employees who work with and work in Lone Tree and quite a few folks who live in Lone Tree and work outside the community. So this is, I think, are the familiar numbers for all of you. And second slice of data, although a year older, and its, and its availability is, is on the next slide showing, go on to the next slide, please. Showing that on a, on a daily basis, we think there's about 17,000 people employed within Lone Tree that don't live in Lone Tree, who would be the potential market for the bus staying and other, other services connecting with the light rail system and, and the reason why a mobility hub makes sense in, in the city of Lone Tree. And I think it supports people. We'll, we'll talk about, yeah, go ahead. Next slide is fine. Thank you. So we think most of the activity in Lone Tree makes it a destination station. We've done some analysis on a couple of the stations, and we, we understand that there are more employees coming to, to the city of Lone Tree. And so the Lone Tree is, is really a regional activity center in that regard. And there's need for people to be able to move from transit to their, to their destination workplaces. I think that's in contrast to other communities that have fewer, fewer employment opportunities and are more bedroom communities to employment centers such as the city of Lone Tree. Lone Tree Mobility Hub is envisioned as a destination station, and we'll go on to the next slide, please, where we don't see Lone Tree as a one-size-fits-all type of thing. We did look at four different stations along I-25. We looked at Ridge Gate, Skyridge, Lincoln, and County Line as possibilities for making this mobility hub connection. What we're looking for in the mobility hub connection is that previous illustration shown is something that's very quick on-off for the bus, not, not literally taking the interchange, getting off the highway, and then getting back on, because that is a 10-minute to 15-minute detour for passengers who might be north or south of the station, depending on which, which direction you're going. So we're looking for something that's basically in the I-25 right of way. We also wanted to, even though the future city center station is off of I-25, we wanted to be able to recognize that that's going to be a significant destination in the future and, and be able to plan these, a mobility hub that will, will relate to the future activity there. Next slide, please. So I think in your packet, we provided a sort of eye-blurring amount of information and then analysis. We didn't want to strain your eyes in this presentation, but suffice it to say, we went through about 10 to 15 different types of criteria, and we think that Skyridge and Ridge Gate, CDOT's humble opinion, look like the better candidates for making a connection in the city of Lone Tree. Well, of course, this is not making a decision. This is giving our opinion and certainly look for feedback from all of you on this before we move forward any further. Next slide, please. So this is a distilled-down version that doesn't hurt your eyes of the latter two stations, Skyridge and Ridge Gate. Green is good. Yellow is somewhat compatible, and there's no red on this chart, so you don't need the Visine to get the red out. You can see, most jobs near the mobility hubs is kind of the, the top, the top row, and I won't go row by row, but we looked at a connectivity, community support, land use, site constraints. Site constraints has to do with land availability and ability to put lanes either in the middle or on the outside for the buses, travel patterns in and out of the stations. So we, we think Skyridge has more advantages than Ridge Gate. And next slide. We've looked at it from the perspective of pedestrians, bicyclists, and commuters using their cars. You can see the different colors represent the different types of jobs in each of, each of these locations. And in, in all cases, the Skyridge location has, has more employees at present and is likely to have more employees for the foreseeable future. So we think that makes sense. The three-mile doesn't necessarily mean you have to ride your bicycle to get to the station if you live closer than three miles. It's just that it becomes more, more compatible for that mode. You can certainly have people driving within the three-mile range or walking longer if they, if they want to walk, walk longer than a half mile. But these are the typical sort of commuting breakdowns that we wanted to, to share with you all. Next slide. So in summation, kind of repeating what was two slides ago, we think Skyridge has the most opportunities as a location. And I wanted to call out the, the blue narrative box on the bottom. We know that Ridge Gate has a ton of parking, and so we actually would see two places in Lone Tree as being served by, by bus staying and other services. I mean, of course, you guys are already served by the light rail system, and we want to leverage the investments that you've already made in the light rail system for the special events where, where you all and your community members would be originating from Lone Tree, trying to get other places. We would use special event services, Bronco's Ride, bus staying to Estes Parks, no staying, and things like that. We would use Ridge Gate for that purpose, because people would be able to drive and park there and have more gear and things like that. Then for the daily commuting, we would have the buses going to and from the south, to and from the north, and connecting with Skyridge. So it's sort of a, a happy marriage of, of two different land uses that you have in your community. I think that's bringing me pretty close to the end of the slide deck, and we'll... So, so to sum it up, today's presentation is really about getting your gut reaction. Are we on the right track with our, with our Skyridge recommendations and CDOT's humble opinion again? And then CDOT will take, is assuming the expense for additional design and partnering with city staff to consider, continue considering these opportunities so you guys don't have to make a decision at this point, but at some point in the future, we would come back to, to ask that partnership question. Partnership, I guess, I will bring that back around. Partnership does not necessarily mean that financial obligations fall wholly on the city of Lone Tree. In some of our other mobility hubs, we've had metro districts, we've had other private partners contributing land or dollars, or staff time, and then we've had communities contributing staff time and, and other resources. So we, we look for much broader partnerships than, than just cash, but ultimately, we will have to, as we go forward, and look at the design in more detail and get to, get to cost estimates for this, we'll, we'll have to work together on, on those things to, to make ends meet. With that, I think I'd like to turn it back to Justin and, and Mayor and Council.
Thank you so much, David. We so very much appreciate you and your team being here today to brief us on this exciting opportunity. And I think we're in the early stages of conversation, but the partnerships that we have had with CDOT have always proven to be successful and I think moving both the city and, and our state transportation department forward. So we look forward to this one as well. I do want to give council an opportunity to ask some questions. So given this virtual format, I'm just going to roll through in order or close to order. And we'll start off with Councilmember Carpenter. Do you have any thoughts, questions for either David and his team or, or Justin?
Yeah, so David, just a quick kind of a macro question. How much in your analysis was taken into consideration ridership levels post-COVID versus the kind of the pre-COVID world that we all lived in and, and transportation needs?
Well, I guess I'd, I'd answer that by saying we're bullish on, on ridership rebounding once we're all vaccinated. We see those things that were here before COVID in terms of congestion and growth continuing to be part of Colorado's fabric and Lone Tree's fabric. So I think continuing to work on options for folks is going to be necessary. We would, of course, increment the service offerings according to vaccinations and according to the actual need. So I guess in part of this discussion of partnership, I think we're, we're somewhat talking only about the infrastructure, but CDOT's making a long-term commitment to cover the operating and maintenance costs of the buses and replacing the buses over time. So that's a significant ongoing commitment that, that CDOT's making that the city doesn't have to participate in those costs.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. And that, that's all I had. Thanks.
Thanks, Jay. Okay, Councilmember Anderson. Any thoughts, comments? We'll let Councilmember Anderson work through his, his mic issues. I'm going to move on to Councilmember Shaw.
Sorry, was that me?
We hear you now. Yes.
Oh, okay, good. I, I, I just heard council member and then silence. This is, what a wonderful proposal. I, I like a lot of what you've looked at, David, and, you know, the spacing of the stops and the opportunities that expand the use of Skyridge Station, yet another reason to live or work in Lone Tree. And I appreciate the, the offer of partnership, and I'm very excited. Thank you for the presentation.
And well, let's touch base with Councilmember Anderson, see if he got his mic issue resolved. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you for your patience, Mayor. I am live now, yes.
Good.
Thank, thank you, David, for this presentation. Certainly eye-opening and in many cases consistent with, I think, what some of our thinking is in terms of where we're coming from and where we'd like to go. So I, I think there is, you know, lots of opportunity for interaction here in partnership. Can you give us any sense of timing? When, when would a hub come along?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Anderson. Our $267 have a three-year fuse from the, from the time at which they're issued. And again, we're only two years out of the four years, so we do have some time, but we would like to, I guess in short, bring a new mobility hub online in the next three to five years in Lone Tree.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Protem Brannick.
Hi, David. Thank you so much for the presentation and what was provided ahead of time. Really appreciate all the insight, and I'm really excited to hear the three-to-five year timeframe. And that, for me, just solidifies Skyridge as the best option, right? Just given the growth patterns and things that we're seeing. I think for, for all of us, working on ways to enable a smoother process for both our residents and our workers that include multimodal, the way you're describing is, is, is really imperative for us, given kind of the constraints of Lincoln and the other things that we see on a day-to-day basis. So really excited to see that kind of leap forward as the right location if we can make it work and, and know that our residents would be thrilled to see us working on something such as this. So really excited to hear the next steps and get a chance to look at some ideas.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. And so, you know, as always, the council summed it up beautifully, David. I think council is fully on board with exploring, continue to explore and invest in this partnership. I think the Skyridge Station is, as you've presented, makes very good sense to move forward with. And we very much appreciate you coming today to give us the more detail, more background on it. And, and I do think that, you know, I often joke, Lone Tree was cited at the Tigris and Euphrates River of Colorado, right, with, or Maine and Maine, as we call it. And so we, we think the location of a mobility hub in here makes excellent sense. And I think the investments that Lone Tree, with our partners at the Douglas County and, and some of our metro districts, the investments that we've made in the, in, in I-25 and in the light rail station and in our investments in bike and PED and transit and intra-city transit, really, you know, payoffs like this make the difference. So I think we're very well positioned to be a great partner. So thank you for, for this. And I want to also commend our staff. I know Dan Rains and Justin have really been working closely with you on this, and we are excited about their efforts and, again, look forward to the next steps in this partnership.
Second, the excellence on the part of staff and appreciate the opportunity today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and thanks to your whole team today. We didn't get to see them all, but we appreciate them all. All right, moving on, we have another exciting presentation today. I'm really happy with, to introduce the 2020 Teen Court Report. And Leanna is going to lead that off from the staff perspective, but we also have our teen court volunteers who are here as well, Aliana, Ella, and Paige. They do tremendous work in our community. And I think I couldn't be prouder of the way they took an idea and ran with it. And Leanna, you're, you have really proven, once again, your value. So could you go ahead and kick it off? And thanks again for being here.
Yeah, thank you. That was a great introduction. So the next slide has the agenda. Hello, Mayor Malley and members of City Council. Thank you so much for your time this evening, and I know that we're, we're very happy to present. For this presentation, I will be presenting the first half, mostly regarding data and processes, and then will be passing it over to the three student leadership board members, who will go over more of the qualitative, the Teen Court 2020 events, along with explaining what the SLB is and their accomplishments. The second half section is organized based on members' expertise and the events they participated in. In addition to volunteering to present this evening, the three members helped create this presentation and the content in it. I also wanted to note that more SLB members did want to present in front of council this evening, but due to logistics and tech limitations, I offered this opportunity to juniors and seniors in the group who agreed to present. But there are other teens who are willing and wanting to be here, and some of them are watching this evening. So the three SLB members presenting will introduce themselves and explain more in the second half of the presentation. So next slide, please. Okay, so this is a screened cases data. You have the data in the packet as well, and I'm available for, for questions about this data or other information you'd like. The item to note here is that there was a decrease in number of cases in general, along with the number of teens in Teen Court. Next slide. Great. And then this is the, the comparison of 2019 and 2020. The percentage of cases that qualified for Teen Court were fairly similar. The main item I wanted to point out is that in 2019, the percentage of non-responses was around 28%. So this means teens that could qualify or they were eligible to participate in Teen Court but did not reach out or call or respond to voicemails and letters. And in 2020, this is 0%, which is phenomenal in my eyes. And this is largely because of Paige, who's presenting and presented last year, recommended that we distribute Teen Court information when a teen is contacted directly by PD. And so PD did this, this past year, and I think that decrease of 30% is pretty phenomenal. Next slide. All right. So this is a comparison of 2019 cases or panels in light green, and then the 2020 cases in dark green. So you can see kind of exactly when COVID happened and in the comparison there. Next slide. And then this is the four-year comparison. It gives a, a general comparison of the number of cases and panels. Something I want to point out here is that in 2018, there were almost double the number of cases screened from 2020, but in 2020, we conducted more panels. And I, I think this is a result of the individuals who, who responded in 2020 or that decreased number of, of non-responses. And I also wanted to explain that 3741 number. So there are more panels than eligible cases in 2020 because some of the 2019 cases... in 2020, because some of the 2019 cases were carried over into January 2020 panels. Next slide, please. And then this is a comparison of volunteer hours. The actual hours for both of these in 2020 and 2019 is higher, since some of the students still have not registered on our Volunteer Connect, which is the website how we track hours. The difference in numbers is can be explained for a couple of reasons. The first is that there were fewer panels in 2020. And secondly, the panel size decreased when we started hosting them virtually. So instead of having five or six volunteers serve in in-person panels, we had two to three serve on virtual panels. And I also included the copy of the survey results in the packet, and you can read over them. I think some of the answers are pretty incredible. And I distributed that survey in the January 25th all-hands meeting. The sample size was 48. And the survey was really intended to get a pulse of what volunteers were wanting to see in the program or how we could help increase what we were doing in Teen Court. Next slide, please. And then I wanted to jump into the first part of 2020, because they were eventful and important months. And then I'll pass on to SLB. Like many employees, 2020 started off very strong, and these are some of the events that Teen Court participated in. So we had trainings with an adult volunteer. We had an in-person general legal training at the very start of it. I went to Washington DC with the Douglas County Healthy Youth Coalition to learn about county and nationwide restorative justice practice. And then we hosted around 15 Denver students who were interested in creating a Teen Court in Denver. For this event, we had teen volunteers downstairs in the Civic Center, leading mock panels. And while they rotated panel observations upstairs, which is a pretty neat event for everyone involved. And then, next slide. And then in March, we had closures. And so we immediately began brainstorming, how can we continue to engage volunteers, since this was completely new? So in the first two weeks of that closure, we offered two virtual trainings for volunteers to practice their four-person skills. We offered volunteers the opportunity to participate in interviews with officers to see what that was like. And then in April, we realized that this new environment would last longer than expected. And so we received approval to host virtual panels. And we did this transition in about two weeks. So we put together new processes. I worked with Jay on documents. We scheduled trainings for volunteers and hosted two different trainings then. We coordinated with all the 15 or so families who were waiting for panels and reached out with each one of those to test teams with them to see how that would work. And in that first six days, we hosted 10 virtual panels. Colorado Springs, their Teen Court was a huge help. They had had virtual panels before, so I had some guidance from them. But this is something I'm very proud of, of how quickly we were able to establish this and how it has been successful ever since. We continue to hold virtual panels due to safety. Some other Teen Courts vacillate between in-person and not being able to have them at all. And so this has been a very stable process that will continue until we're able to resume in-person panels. And so with that, if you want any questions now, but I'll pass it over to the Student Leadership Board.
Okay, why don't we pass it along, and then we'll come back. Thank you very much. Great, great presentation.
The next slide, please.
Good evening, Mayor Millet and council members. My name is Elena DeVille, and I'm a junior at Thunder Ridge High School. I don't know where I'm going to go to college yet, but I'm definitely looking towards the East Coast. And the reason why I joined Teen Court was because I was interested in law. But over time, it's really developed into me discovering and enacting my passion for helping others.
Hi, my name is Ella Ivaslot. I am currently a senior at Mountain Vista High School in Highlands Ranch. Right now, I am looking towards, as well, colleges on the East Coast, particularly Yale, and considering Colorado College here in Colorado. I joined Teen Court because, like Elena, I also have an interest in law. I plan to become an international human rights lawyer when I become older and attending law school, of course. This was an opportunity for me to get involved in my community in a way I'm passionate about and really explore my interests and passions.
And I'm Paige Nelson-Juan. I'm in 12th grade, and I am homeschooled. I'm applying to colleges mainly on the West Coast, including University of California schools and Stanford, as well as liberal arts colleges like Reed and St. John's College. I've been volunteering with Teen Court for three years, and I initially began volunteering because I wanted to learn more about municipal and legal proceedings. But I remained with the program because I found I could directly see the impacts of my actions. So the Student Leadership Board serves as a bridge between the city of Lone Tree and its Teen Court volunteers. But SLB also coordinates events and outreach on behalf of Teen Court. Thus, we have two committees designated as such and distributed here tonight. I'm on the outreach committee, and Ella and Elena are on the events committee. Next slide, please.
Okay, so this fall, Teen Court members had the opportunity to go to CU Boulder's Mini Law School virtually. They graciously waived the $200 fee for Teen Court attendees. We had 17 members attend, and topics included were civil, health, environmental, immigration, and election law. After this opportunity, Teen Court members wrote a one-page reflection and had a discussion with the city clerk, which Paige will go into later. CU Boulder extended this opportunity to Teen Court members this spring. Topics will surround business law and pandemic recovery, and attendees will write a two-page reflection or a five-slide presentation. Next slide, please.
As an addendum, too, Mini Law School participants attended a virtual event where they presented their reflections from Mini Law School and then listened to a presentation on local elections by city clerk Jay Robb. The event was then timely, as it took place just days after the election.
So then volunteers also had the opportunity to work with Douglas County Libraries as Penpals to Morningstar, which is an assisted living facility. The Lone Tree Arts Center additionally assisted in providing transportation, and 11 volunteers got responses back from their pen pals, and one Morningstar resident even hung up a Teen Court Volunteers letter on their wall. Next slide. So another opportunity for Teen Court volunteers was the empowerment class. One of the sentencing opportunities provided for Teen Court respondents is called the empowerment class, which assists teens in rebuilding their life after a crime. And the empowerment class is offered to Teen Court volunteers and provided an opportunity for volunteers to experience and understand the restorative justice opportunities they offer to Teen Court respondents.
On October 31st, the Police Department and City of Lone Tree staff and volunteers helped hand out candy in a socially-distanced Halloween celebration to trick-or-treating passengers. Leanna and a few Lone Tree Teen Court volunteers participated. Next slide, please.
Teen Court's first-ever virtual legal training happened this summer. It was 10 hours over five days, and we had activities introducing students to restorative thinking. Some of these activities were observing a mock panel or reviewing Lone Tree's own municipal code. I was one of these graduates, and even though the program was fully virtual, it was extremely effective training. And when I did my first peer panel, it was a completely smooth transition, and it felt like I had done 10 of them before this. Next slide, please. This Veterans Day, Teen Court also had the opportunity to thank our veterans. Teen Court members wrote 50 cards total, and it was in partnership with Morningstar and the Police Department. Teen Court members who participated received a chief commendation from Chief Wilson. Next slide, please. Oh, just kidding, sorry.
It's all right. In October, Lone Tree volunteers participated in a mock panel to model effective virtual panels to the Castle Rock Teen Court Coordinator and volunteers. Now, next slide, please.
The Student Leadership Board's Event Committee also organized some speaker events in 2020. This included a CU Boulder Law School student, Natasha Vitari. This opportunity increased their professionalism and communication skills by having to coordinate and plan an event for a medium-sized audience. Attendees got to learn about law school and different legal pathways from a new perspective.
Judge Gresh of Lone Tree Municipal Court talked to Teen Court and Youth Commission about his career experience, and then facilitated questions about law school and gave career advice. This also took place within the same week as the law school student event. Next slide, please.
So the Events Committee partnered with Judy's House, a nonprofit that helps children and families who are grieving a death find connection and healing as well. Meaning, with the Judy's House employee, volunteers were able to gain an immersive experience by learning how children and families respond to grief. And the appropriate response is to give to someone who is grieving, which, as I know from my experience on Teen Court, are skills that are necessary to provide empathy and understanding to our respondents. The Events Committee organized with various locations around Lone Tree to provide drop-off locations for supplies, received financial aid from the Lone Tree Target, and fully facilitated all communication. I haven't designed the advertisement shown on the slide. The project is currently going on until February 24th, so if you're willing and able, don't hesitate to get involved. Next slide.
The Outreach Committee scripted, filmed, and edited a promotional video that is currently on the Volunteers page of the Teen Court website. Miles Rubin is currently producing another informational video. This time will feature Mayor Millet. Next slide, please. The Outreach Committee has also been planning a Teen Rights Day event on February 20th. Guest speakers Elizabeth Porter Mural and Senator Pete Lee will speak on their experience and the importance of RJ, Restorative Justice. Former and present Teen Court members will also present on their experiences with the Teen Court program and also about adolescents' rights. You all are welcome to attend if available. Next slide, please.
Thank you so much. So this is, that was what's happened in the past 12 months or so. And so going into 2021, I think the overall theme is continuing partnerships with other organizations. That was really strengthened this year. So doing a pilot program with Regis Jesuit and having an internship learning program with their service learning class, and hosting a day of community service for respondents and Teen Court volunteers and Regis students, working with Julius for Arbor Day, and also continuing to strengthen the partnership with CU Law School and hosting a workshop on contracts. Next slide, please.
As a whole, Teen Court is going to try to improve in 2021 in many ways, some of which are creating more events so that Teen Court volunteers can connect with other volunteers. This is a fairly large program, and I feel that if volunteers feel more connected with each other, then their dedication and belief that we are capable of doing, creating change for the better will increase tenfold. We also want to create a detailed online Teen Court calendar. I think this will also increase the volume of volunteers' morale and investment in the program, as well as feeling more a part of our collective whole.
So using some of the systems that we have developed as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, Teen Court looks to maintain this flexibility past the pandemic by offering both online and virtual volunteer events to increase volunteer turnout, ensuring that each Teen Court volunteer has an opportunity to serve Lone Tree in a way that best fits their needs. In addition, we also hope to create better modes of communication with volunteers, possibly through using services such as GroupMe and Remind to ensure all volunteers are in the loop at all times and are best able to get back to the Lone Tree community. Next slide.
So with that, thank you so, so much for your time, and your support means everything. And I think that that's been evident in your words and actions. So thank you so much.
So I think "thank you" is what we want to say to you. So before I turn it over to council, and I'm going to come back again, because I just can't help myself, my face hurts from smiling so much, listening to this presentation, some of these remarkable women. And we are disappointed that we couldn't hear from everybody on Teen Court, because I know you guys are just representing a whole bunch of other folks who are just as dedicated and passionate and articulate and intelligent. So please convey our gratitude to them. Paige, huge shout-out to you for the recommendation about having our police officers actually distribute the material. I think the evidence is absolutely there. Before I turn it over, I'm going to come back to the end. I want council to get a chance. But wherever you three end up, you must come back and give us a briefing on what remarkable things you accomplished, because there is no doubt in my mind, with my cheeks that hurt from smiling as I listen to you, the world is bright. The biggest natural resource that we have in the United States and in the world is youth. And you guys are going to be the game changers. You guys are going to make the differences. You guys are going to repair your resiliency. You're just remarkable. You're remarkable individuals. So thank you for the time you've dedicated to our city. And with that, we're going to start off with the child among us on council. No, I'm just kidding. It's actually Councilmember Carpenter, who is really leading a lot of Douglas County youth initiatives, and I know you probably know him well. So Councilmember Carpenter, we're going to give the first comments to you.
Well, I certainly am not mature, that's for sure. No, great job, young ladies. That was really, really impressive. And as you know, I'm a very big supporter of all you do. And the mark that you make, not only here in Lone Tree, but all of our neighboring communities, are in complete jealousy over what we have established here. And I just wanted to give a quick shout-out to Leanna for all of her leadership on this over the years. You know, this has really evolved from being just a pure Teen Court Restorative Justice initiative, and now it's community outreach. I love what you're doing with the Police Department, with Morningstar. It's awesome. Reaching out on Halloween. So getting creative in a time where we need to be able to pivot and try to think outside the box on the way that you can provide value to the community that you serve. And so you guys have done a great job on that. Along those lines, as you know, I'm always bragging about you all, and there's going to be a youth leadership summit on March 9th. I'll work with Leanna on getting this out to you all, but I know that they want some of our representatives to talk to other youth throughout Douglas County on ways that they can get involved, and just the impact that Teen Court has had on you. And I can, we can always speak to the impact it's having on our kids here in Lone Tree as well. And, you know, one thing that the numbers don't show is just the amount that alleviates so much strain from our municipal system. And that, you can't put a dollar value on it. You could, but it'd be tough to actually drill down that deep. But it's providing a huge value, not only to the teens here in our community, but also to all the taxpayers throughout the region. So awesome job. That was a really good presentation. Thanks.
Thanks, Jay. I'm going to switch to our Mayor Protem Brannick, who's got a lot of experience with teens. So Kathy.
Yeah, I got lots of them here at the house. I got two seniors just like you all that are making those same decisions about college right now. And I have another one that's in college. And I will tell you, I got asked this week to do an interview about what it's like to be a Mayor Protem and serve on City Council. And one of the questions I got was, what was one of the things I was most proud of in my five years I've been doing this? And I had to say it was Teen Court. You know, I shared with them, and I was trying to explain in this very short interview, just all the amazing ways in which this program impacts our community, because it's not just the court aspect, right? Like all the things you just described about how you're enriching your own opportunities as you move forward, as you're helping others decide if this is the venue they want to go to, as you're helping community members. I mean, it's just like, this is a beautiful program that shows what is best about local involvement in our community. And I'm just so very proud when I get to go out and talk about this program, because I think it's what the best of our community and what the best of local government can provide as a way to give back. And so just deep gratitude for your volunteerism and the amount of time that you all spend. And Leanna, for your leadership, we're just super grateful for each and every one of you.
Thanks, Kathy. Okay, Councilmember Anderson.
I thought I was going to get an update on what was going on with Teen Court that had to do with youngsters that may be having some problems and being redirected to, you know, keep their lives on track. And what an eye-opening presentation in terms of how you reacted to COVID during the past year, your outreach programs, impact on the community in so many different ways, as the other council members have spoken to. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your creativity. And we are just so blessed here in the community to have young people. here in the community to have young people like yourselves that are concerned about community, are concerned about the lives of others, and are making a positive impact on other people in our community, and lasting impact as the community moves forward. So, thank you very much for the time you put in, for the results you've had, for the learning that you've had, and great luck to all of you in terms of going on and pursuing the educations that you talked about earlier in your presentation.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, and Councilmember Shaw.
Great, thank you, yes. I am so grateful for the work that you do to help some of these teens turn their lives around and have the opportunity to make that one mistake and not let it ruin their lives, and in return, I'm so excited, you know, to learn about all of the ways that you are having a chance to learn more and have community contact and enrich your own lives at the same time that you are helping others. Leanna, just wonderful leadership, and I know you, so I know you would point out how valuable these teens are to making this happen. I'm so glad you've been resilient and thinking out of the box on how we can do this. I have one question about whether or not, when we return to whatever normal is going to be, more in person, are there aspects of this experience with the virtual sessions that you may keep?
Definitely, and I think that ranges, and more discussions are needed with my team, but things such as having a smaller panel size, I think that the teens really liked that, they were like, "We prefer this, we want this." I think that having some virtual trainings allowed for volunteers, like Ella said, to be involved in different ways. Having access, I think that was sometimes a struggle, like we had panels on Saturdays sometimes, and opening virtual panels, is that something that will continue? I don't know, I think it's an option, or we know that it can, but yeah, a lot of details like that, I think, were helpful, and we realized that this is a beneficial change, yeah.
Wonderful. Well, thank you all, I'm so grateful.
Thanks, Wynne, and Leanna, I told the Teen Court volunteers how amazing they were, so now let me tell you how amazing you are. Talk about taking a ball and running with it, my goodness, you have really gone beyond what I think I had ever even envisioned when this program was brought forth to the city of Lone Tree, and I am so grateful to you for your leadership, for your resilience, and for your passion about this, and I think, you know, all of this good work has a direct line back to you, so thank you for that, and thank you for allowing the youth and the community to make a real difference, and they have, and so again, please extend our deepest gratitude to the volunteers that weren't able to present today, because, and we look forward to hearing them at some other time, and, you know, council again, looks forward to connecting with them physically at some of those other future events, and I very much appreciated their, in their comments, I did read the survey comments, "Great idea to do that as well," talking about other opportunities to volunteer and engage, and I think that just speaks again to the great work you're doing, that it's not, they want to do more of it, so, and I think council would look forward to opportunities to engage with them as they're engaging with the community, so thank you for all of it, so appreciate you. Teen Court, if you didn't get to speak to us today, but you're listening, we just thank you so much, very, very much appreciate your good work. All right, so my smiling's going to stop, now I'm talking about tobacco and vaping, wah, 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 but, no, but we are having a discussion, council, concerning code changes for tobacco and vaping products. So, initially, there's a two-part discussion, we're going to talk about the ordinance regarding local regulations on vaping and tobacco, and then we're also going to talk about the ordinance regarding the age of possession of vaping and tobacco products. So, Austin Good is going to lead this off, and once again, there's a great nexus back to the Lone Tree Youth and our Youth Commission and their good work, as they presented to council on this already, so Austin, take this one away.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and council, really glad that we're able to be here to start discussing these ordinances. This is something that we talked about, the mayor mentioned back in September, and so now staff has gotten to work, we've put together a couple draft ordinance for this for you, and we wanted to bring them back to you before they come to first reading, so that we can make sure that they're fine-tuned just the way we need for our community, so we'll go to the next slide. We're going to go ahead and start off, as the mayor mentioned, with a discussion around the ordinance for licensing. Next slide. So, how we got here, I'm going to go over this pretty quickly, we've discussed this back in September, but in December of 2019, the president signed some legislation amending some FDA or the Federal Food Drug and Cosmetic Act, which raised the minimum age for tobacco sales from 18 to 21, and that took effect immediately, so currently in Lone Tree, you can't buy tobacco products unless you're 21, however, our current code says that you have to be 18, so that is something that we do need to clean up. And then in February of 2020, the Youth Commission, they recommended to the city council that the Lone Tree Municipal Code be changed in order to align with that federal law, but also look at a local administrative license so that we have some administrative enforcement power to ensure that retailers are following the rules and we prevent the sale of tobacco at the point of sale. And then finally, in July of 2020, the state House Bill 20-1001 was passed, and this implemented some state changes to both the age of sale, age of possession, and also developed state licensing process. Next slide. So, diving into that House Bill a little bit further, again, prohibit sale of tobacco or nicotine products to anyone 21 or under, it removes the criminal penalty for minors for purchasing or possessing nicotine products, really focusing again on that point of sale. It requires state licensing for retailers on a statewide basis to start on July 1 of 2021, so that's upcoming, and the reason this is important for Lone Tree is because if we implement a licensing process before that date, we're able to apply some local controls, so we have better local control over the licensing process and those compliance checks, and it also created some more stringent local regulations, or allows for more local regulations if we so choose. Next slide. Some other points of that House Bill, it imposes a 500-foot distance requirement from schools, again, old retailers would be grandfathered in, but in the future, pending any local changes that we would make on a local level, it would require that no tobacco retailer would be licensed within 500 feet of a school. It does allow, again, local jurisdictions to eliminate or reduce that spacing or eliminate types of schools. It also imposes some other restrictions on retailers, like no advertising signs for vaping products from outside, employees must be at least 18 to handle products, and it also doesn't allow for vending machines in non-age-restricted areas, and it also establishes a precedent for the state authorities to collaborate with local authorities on compliance checks. Next slide. And so now we get into what a proposed licensing ordinance looks like for Lone Tree. Next slide. What we did upfront is we've, you know, gone through and really identified all of our tobacco retailers, we have 12 in the city that would be subject to having to obtain a license, I'll mention this later, we did reach out to all of them through a letter after our discussion with council, and we received no feedback or concerns about a licensing process. We anticipate a lot of that's probably because they would be required to get licensed through the state anyway, so this isn't too big of an additional burden. Next slide. Looking at what neighboring cities are doing, at this time, there are no licensing processes in any other jurisdictions around us except for Castle Pines, they implemented a process in late 2019. Next slide. So, we do propose this to be administrative license, to be handled by the city clerk's office, this would mean that unlike a liquor license, each tobacco retailer wouldn't have to come to council or the Liquor Licensing Authority Board for approval of that license, we can all be handled administratively. The proposed fee from the clerk's office is $250 for initial application and $200 for an annual renewal fee, you can see that puts us pretty in line with most of our neighbors, Castle Pines is lower, but when we went through and we calculated the staffing costs for two compliance checks a year plus the administration, $250 for the initial and $200 for the renewal, really hits right on the dot for what our staff time is costing. Next slide. So, really, we want to make this as easy as possible, really simple application, staff would review it, and then the license would be issued, so we're really thinking that by making this administrative, we can really streamline the process. Next slide. Staff is proposing some local changes after discussing this with council in September from what the state would be doing if we weren't to create a local licensing option. One of those areas is that for any schools that serve grade six and under, we would propose that they would be excluded from the 500-foot distancing requirement, this is because of kind of our unique growth pattern in Lone Tree, we're a much more mixed-use community, which means, for example, Lone Tree Elementary is located really near a commercial corridor, and we really wanted to find a way to target the, really target the distancing requirement to who we're most concerned about, which would be youth that are able to independently go to these places, you don't see Lone Tree Elementary students leaving campus during lunch, for example, and so there's very low chance that they'd be wandering to the gas station to purchase some tobacco products. Meanwhile, you know, with a future high school in the city, that would be much more of an option, and so we wanted to more so target that regulation instead of just making it a wide sweeping one across the board. And then the other local change would be just making our licensing period be from January 1st to December 31st, and the state's licensing process would align with that. Next slide. So, diving into the distancing requirement a little bit more, this is just showing our little analysis of all the schools in Lone Tree and the proximity to current tobacco retailers, again, any existing establishments would be grandfathered in, but for any future tobacco retailers that come online, we would recommend that grade six and under schools be excluded. Next slide. Now, we'll talk a little bit about enforcement. Next slide. So, there are, again, 12 establishments that sell tobacco in the city, the Lone Tree Police Department estimates that it would take two detectives and one buyer to complete those compliance checks, and it would take about two days annually, one day for each check to go through and do all of those checks. Next slide. Looking at violations, we tried to line up pretty well with our neighbors here, while also allowing for a little bit of flexibility, so for the first violation, that would be a $500 fine or seven-day suspension or both, second violation, $1,000, up to a 30-day suspension or both, and then for a third violation, $1,500 fine and potential for the license to be revoked, and that would all be, that would have to be three violations within a 36-month period in order to get to that point. Next slide. We did complete some outreach, as the mayor mentioned, the Youth Commission actually initiated this project, and they've actually been involved through the ordinance's development, as was mentioned during the last council meeting, during the Youth Commission's update, our city attorney, Linda Michau, was able to come to their Youth Commission meeting and present the ordinance, and they were able to see how their idea grew into an actual law, which is a really, really great process for them to see, and also, it's really great for them to be able to make that impact on the community, even just proposing it, no matter what happens. Tri-County Health advised the city early on in the process and helped us with some recommendations, and as I mentioned, we did send out a letter to all of the tobacco retailers in the city and didn't hear any concerns. Next slide. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to council to talk about any questions that you have for licensing, we do have our city attorney on the line, our city clerk on the line, lots of folks that are able to help answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Austin.
If you lucked out in the right direction.
Thanks, Austin. Okay, we're going to start off with Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you very much. I actually had a couple of questions about the products themselves, so weren't there some that were specifically targeted for children, bubble gum or unicorn or things like that in terms of the vaping products? And although, you know, a fifth grader isn't going to walk into the store and be allowed to buy these products, hopefully, it seems a little odd that we would still allow them near the school, and I understand that physical proximity, you know, to shopping areas is part of what we're concerned with, but I've kind of been going back and forth in my head about that, the child-targeted vaping products.
Austin, let me just jump in, because I think that was based on a council conversation more than a staffer, and I think it was recognizing that we've already got these establishments within the community already selling the product, so how do we kind of thread the needle a little bit, but I think that is a council decision to be made, so I think we should give the other council members the opportunity to kind of weigh in on their thoughts on it more than, this is a policy issue for us to deal with, not, council, I think staff is kind of agnostic on it or would do what we ask of them, right? So, other...
Other feedback, I like the 36-month timeframe and the fines or penalties as have been laid out, I'm fine with the fee even though it is higher than our neighbor, so I'm very supportive of what you presented.
And I'm glad, let's come, and I want the other council members to reflect on the 500-foot rule, Wynne, so where would you like to see it, or where, I mean, are you just questioning why we did it, or would you like to see a change there? I just want to make sure I understand.
Yeah, and I go back and forth, but perhaps, perhaps it is that you can't be within the 500 feet if you, if part of what you sell is youth-targeted product like that or something like that, I'm not sure what the right answer is, but...
Great, I think I understand where you're going, you're kind of trying to, let's talk about it a little bit, and what would be helpful for the conversation, as we hear from other council members, if we could go back to the slide that shows the location of the, there was, it's the schools and then, or, and the, yeah, yeah, that's probably helpful, and then the schools that are within the radius of existing tobacco retailers, Lone Tree Elementary, and again, I think that goes back to the, and we ran into the same issue with liquor license, with the liquor license in that, in that location, if council recalls, we had a property change and wanting to get to a restaurant, wanting a liquor license when the property next door had it, but the property next door, it was grandfathered in, so I think this map is helpful as we continue on with the conversation. Let's move to Councilmember Anderson, any love reaction to Councilmember Shaw's comments, and then any other questions you have of staff.
Well, this is certainly a dynamic situation in terms of commercial activity and schools, you know, what we have is a snapshot now of what we have, and the 500-foot distancing seems to make sense, 1,000 foot sounds like a, could create somewhat of a burden in terms of people who... 1,000 foot sounds like a, could create somewhat of a burden in terms of people trying to set up business and where they choose to locate, may not make as much sense. So I, from a distance perspective, I, in terms of where we are and keeping things open for the future that are balanced and reasonable, 500 feet sounds reasonable to me.
Okay, any other questions for staff about the ordinance, potential ordinance?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, great. And I think, when, just to understand, your issue was whether or not it was the sixth grade limit, correct? It was, it was the, wasn't the 500 feet so much as it was, should we, should it be for all schools? Not just schools over, over...
Correct.
Just want to make, just want to make sure that's clear for council. Okay, and Councilmember Carpenter?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm fully supportive of, of everything as staff has kind of laid out. I think it's really streamlined. I think it's fair. I truly do. My only concern, though, is my daughter Stella being able to still swing by Conoco to pick up a pack of smokes.
Just stop, Jay. Just stop.
So, no, so I, I think, yeah, I'm comfortable with the 500-foot provision as well. So everything else is good.
And you're okay with it being limited to just over sixth grade?
Correct, correct.
Got it. Do you want to clarify and make sure? Okay, anything else, Jay?
Nope, not for me. Thanks.
All right, all right. Mayor Protem Bronnik?
I'm the same as Jay, so I'm good with it as proposed. Thank you for looking into the multitude of things we asked the last time around. I feel like it's all covered really well. And I really appreciate the validation around what other communities are doing because that tends to be just a really good litmus test. So super pleased with all that. I too agree at the 500-foot as well as the sixth grade. So I'm, I'm good.
Okay, okay. And I guess I am also comfortable with the above-sixth grade. And I, and I appreciate the space that Councilmember Shaw is in. I think we are all in that space, is how do we thread that needle? Even when we looked at, well, could we just ban those products? The flavored products and the ones that aren't specifically targeted to youth? And I think we learned from staff that, that that was going to be very challenging because menthol is considered flavor, and how do we distinguish amongst them? So I, you know, I am, I am comfortable with moving forward this way. I think having this on the books before we get a middle school, or we do have one high school in Lone Tree, but before we get a second high school in Lone Tree, I think is important. And fortunately, the high school that we already have is sighted 500 feet, more than 500 feet away from a retailer. I think the other thing we need to keep in mind when we make these decisions is the continuation of charter schools that come into the community. And we don't know necessarily, it's not just property that's owned and zoned for school districts. We've seen multiple buildings and multiple locations that were not designated as school sites become school sites. So I think this is as best we can thread the needle. I, I do have one additional question of staff, and, and that would be, and I'm going to ask it, but then I want to follow up with Councilmember Shaw to make sure we're close, that other, the, the 500 feet in sixth grade is closed. But my question for staff is going to be around education and outreach to the business community once we put this licensing process into place. I know that our city clerk has done a really great, and our city clerk's office has done a really great job with our liquor licensing and education around liquor licensing and continuing education around liquor licensing. And as we look at this and then the potential next ordinance, I'd love to understand what plans are being made to make sure we're communicating with our business community. And I appreciate the outreach to talk to them about this price, process, allowing them to have the opportunity to comment on the process. But I also want to make sure we're doing some education and outreach to them should the city move forward with an ordinance. So while staff thinks about that, I'm going to go back to Winn and just make sure she has the opportunity to express her thoughts about the sixth grade, the 500-foot rule applying to six, to schools over sixth grade. What are your thoughts, Winn?
Yeah, and, and I think I, I can live with that. I, I, you know, I think what is the most challenging for me is that, you know, some, someone who works in the Safeway or the Phillips My Goods market is going to clearly recognize someone who's in sixth grade as not being 21. So it, it shouldn't be a problem. I, I just... Yeah, I, I can live with that.
Yeah, I think we'd all rather live in a world where we aren't targeting bubble gum products, tobacco products. Think we'd all prefer to live in that world. But unfortunately, reality is this, right? So, okay, thanks, thanks, Winn. All right, what are the thoughts about any plans to educate and training information to our business community about the 21 and up and other plans? So Austin?
Sure, yeah, Jay, you can feel free to jump in here. You know, I think the 21 and up, most of our business community hopefully is already aware of that. That's been in effect for about a year. So, so, so that shouldn't be as much of a problem. I think, staff, we can go to the, to the board. And before bringing this to first reading, we can put together a really solid plan. We have talked about timeline for the rollout of a license and making sure that the clerk's office has enough time for outreach to actually get in touch with all the retailers, get them through the licensing process before making it effective, not just making it effective the day after it's approved by council and putting everyone in a tailspin. So we are trying to build in some buffer time into the timeline. But we, we can definitely put together a, a more solid game plan for you before bringing this back for first reading. Jay, do you have any, anything you'd like to add?
And while Jay, before you answer, what I'm concerned about, I don't want the first contact to be a compliance check. I don't want the first contact to be an underage buyer going in with police officers and a potential warning or ticket being issued. So that's, you know, that's, that's the part I am most interested in, that this is something we are taking seriously and there will be compliance checks around it. And here's our best practices that we think, that we've been advised by the state or by Tri-County Health or whoever that, that are employed. And something like that going out and a periodic reminder, just as we do with liquor licensing, is what I'm envisioning. But Jay, Jay Robb, do you have any thoughts other than that?
Not too many, mayor. I would just add that we could do more field work before the licensing process begins. And we've done a great job at connecting to our liquor license holders. Once we find out the names of managers and email contacts, we push out, you know, mass messages from the city all the time to, to keep in communication with them. And we'll do the same for the tobacco vendors.
Great, I think that's great. And even as they're going through and obtaining the license, understanding what's expected of them and that compliance checks will occur. So if you could, when you bring it back for first reading, have a better description of that engagement that we're going to be having with the business community on this and the other one. So I won't ask the question again. All right, so thanks for that one. Now we're moving on to 1B. Austin, so go back to your end of your slides.
Nice job to whoever's driving the slide. You're doing good at this. We're moving on to age of possession of vaping tobacco products. This is a separate ordinance. Next slide. So in alignment with the state and federal law, the age of sale again is being raised to 21. Our current municipal code reflects that it's 18. And so no matter what world we live in, we do need to fix that part. Now, after discussion with council during the September 15th study session, along with Tri-County Health, Lone Tree Police Department, staff is prepared to draft ordinance that eliminates age of possession from our code, which really, in effect, is really switching priority from writing tickets to youth for possessing tobacco products more toward the age of sale for enforcement. Next slide. So looking at some considerations here, we really write a small number of minor possession of tobacco tickets, and I'll get into that in the next slide. But it's mostly a secondary charge when the youth is already contacted for something else. There are also, you know, again, I wanted to mention that we are focusing on the retailer and really focusing on that age of sale, which has been proven to be the more effective place to reduce tobacco use in teens and youth, which is really the end result and the end goal that we all want to go after. And it really aligns with public health best practices. Minor possession laws haven't been shown to be as effective of a tool. And really, they're just something that adds a little bit of work to our police department's plates if they're, if they have to respond to those calls. But they're also, it's addressed in other areas. One of those that we did look into is with schools. Tobacco use on school property would still not be allowed. And state law does direct the schools to develop those tobacco policies. So the schools should have mechanisms in place already to be dealing with those on school properties. The downside to eliminating age of possession would be that other cities around us haven't made that move yet. We'd probably be the first in our region. And so that is something to think about when we think about regional consistency. Next slide. So looking at our neighboring cities, this is up in the air. As of now, I know other cities are currently looking, but this is the current scape of what it looks like. Greenwood Village has moved to 21, Parker has moved to 21. I would anticipate the other jurisdictions are probably going to be looking at this pretty soon, whether it's, you know, either formally decide to leave it as is or increase the age of possession to 21 in alignment with the age of sale. Next slide. So getting into enforcement history and why we think moving in this direction might be the proper way to go. In the last three years, Lone Tree Police Department has issued 22 minor possession of tobacco tickets. In 18 of those cases, they were all secondary charges. So that's after they were already charged with shoplifting or another crime. And of those offenses, only four of them were the primary offense over the past three years. Next slide. And with that, we'll turn it back to council. This is a very values-driven discussion. And so we'll definitely be directing this toward whatever, you know, whatever council's decision is. But this is, from what we heard at the last study session, this is the direction that this ordinance has been drafted.
Thanks, Austin. And I'm going to kick it off. And I think the mayor, I think Kathy, Mayor Protem Bronnik had, had, I had a lot of thoughts on these, on this issue, if I recall, all the way back to September. But Kath, why don't you kick it off?
Yeah, I would just, I, I haven't changed my position. That I, I don't think that, I would not be in favor of changing the age to 21. And that's, like you said, it's based on just kind of an ethical space I sit in that says that if we were going to ask people to go to war and allow them to vote, they have enough knowledge to be able to decide whether or not they would like a tobacco product as well. So...
So Kath, can I just clarify for that? Because it is illegal. It's, it's illegal under federal law, it's illegal under state law to be under 21. So it's, it's whether or not, I think what we're, whether we're, we're trying to decipher is whether, what, you're not, you're not comfortable with it being against the law, gotcha? But then it's also being a criminal offense, right? That's what, yes, just make sure we're clear on that, right?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And I think, and so let's see where the other council members are on this, on this issue. And we'll start with Councilmember Anderson.
I don't have a strong opinion on this issue one way or the other. I, I just perceive that there could be unnecessary problems develop if you're different than state and federal law. But I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other.
So, and if I may interject, this would actually be us aligning with state law. The state did strike down their age of possession law. So that, that is part of the impetus for us to follow suit. Right?
Okay.
And if I may add to mayor and city council, sorry for the interruption, but even under federal law, I believe it's really the perch, the sale age, not the possess, possession age that was increased to 21. So again, we're talking about two different offenses. One is possession, which is now primarily a local offense you are directing policy on versus the sale of tobacco products to those under 21.
And Linda, could you clarify for council? And maybe you or maybe the chief, Chief Wilson might need to weigh in on this one. Is understanding the process that does happen when, so if, if an 18-year-old is found in possession, if we follow the state law, if we decide to keep our ordinance in line with the state law, does the, does the police officer take it away from them and not, but, and not issue a ticket? Or is it up to the discretion of the police officer or what happens?
If it's illegal to possess, then we're going to seize it and place it into evidence. If we, if we're not going to cite him, we'll destroy the evidence. But if we are going to cite him, then we keep it for potential court case.
Right, so if we do this ordinance and you're, and the officers come in contact with, with a, an underage, they can't buy it, but somebody's given it to them, or however they get a hold of a cigarette, so the officer does nothing? If we, if we put in, if we... Do you understand my question?
No, I don't. I'm sorry.
So I know, I know, I'm not being very articulate. There's a 17-year-old smoking a cigarette. One of our police officers, if we pass, if we get rid of the age of possession offense, one of our officers walks past, you know, 15, 16, 17-year-olds smoking.
Well, if you get rid of the ordinance, then, I mean, if it's a state law, we can enforce it from that point of view. But if you get rid of the ordinance, then yeah, we're not going to be able to do anything.
Right, right. So they just have it. I just want to make, I make sure that, that was my understanding. I just wanted to make sure that that was correct, so nothing happens.
Correct.
Correct, because the state law has eliminated...
Correct.
Possession charge, the minor in possession charge.
Right, so, so nothing would happen to them. And the focus is on the retail. And so, and, and in the, in the, just for understanding, if I recall the presentation correctly, there were three incidents where it was just a, and I, it was just a minor in possession of tobacco in the last however many years?
I believe it was four in the past three years.
Four in the past three years that, and, and so the only contact, the only reason the officer contacted the individual was because they thought they were underage smoking, correct?
It was probably a contact at the high school, just some kind of complaint about the person having it. It's pretty rare.
Oh, got it, got it.
They're just going to contact a juvenile for being in possession of tobacco.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that for me. I appreciate that. So council, thanks for indulging me. I just wanted to understand the process before I weighed in on my thoughts on this. So I think we have not heard from Councilmember Carpenter yet.
Yeah, so I'm more in favor of it, obviously, for purchasing. But for possession, I think it just makes it easier to just be a little more consistent, for sure. And also knowing that there, for all the instances that you've referenced in the last three years, it's they typically were doing something else, whether it's shoplifting or something else, as opposed to just randomly going up to, to an 18-year-old or 19-year-old and, and approaching them. So I still am in favor of, of us laying it out or approving it as it has been laid out myself.
Okay, so getting rid of the age of possession?
Correct.
Got it, okay. Councilmember Shaw?
And, and I would be in favor of getting rid of the minor in possession charge as well. But I do have a question about, so if we wonder how children become, receive these if stores can't sell them? Certainly, they could steal from their parents if their parents have this stuff. But, but would they be getting it from someone who's 21 or someone who's selling it? Or are they, did they get a large block of this and they're selling it to their little friends? Or, I, I mean, I guess, is there another way that we could address that potential issue?
So it's my understanding, the gifting of it, the gifting of it or sale of it would, so, would be illegal. So even a, even a, so that's still illegal, Winn, under, under... So even a, even a, so that's still illegal when under, under 1A, what we talked about before. So.
So someone who had an abnormally large quantity that they couldn't consume themselves in a, you know, two year period, we could assume that they're selling it?
I don't think so. I mean, I think that would be, I think I would turn, who am I? I'm a civil engineer. I would turn that, I think that's probably going to, I, I don't, I just don't know how likely that, that scenario was going to play out. I mean, kids get liquor, they're not allowed to have liquor. You know, it's just a matter of whether or not this is, you know, the mommy in me has a very different answer than, than, than the mayor in me to this, to this scenario. So it's just a matter of whether or not the age of possession we want to keep on our books or do we want to align with what the state is doing?
I don't, I mean, it hasn't been an issue. And I suppose if it becomes an issue, we can pass an ordinance, so.
Go back. Yeah.
Right, so I think that I would be fine to take this off the books, age of possession.
Yeah. And, and I am inclined to agree with that as well. As much as my mommy hat feels very different about what might happen with my children and my house, I just feel like, given the world that today and everything, our police officers are asked to contend and deal with, it's also the, I think, I think that to try and address the issue at the source is probably a better, a better alternative to the solution. Chief, I saw you turn your camera on. Is there something you want to add or?
Yeah, so. I wonder, maybe Linda, you can weigh on this as well. But I wonder if there's a way to basically have, have it still as a municipal ordinance, both no penalty. So then if we do come in contact with a juvenile that's in possession, we can seize the item and destroy it instead of handing it back or giving it or letting the child take it away or what have you. There are a few, you know, non-penalty laws out there where there's really no fine or anything that goes with it. But it's still illegal to possess as a minor to possess it. Because I can, I can foresee some upset parents, principals and teachers and all sorts of folks who, when we tell them, no, we can't take that. I know they could probably seize it, but, but I, I don't know. To me, that makes more sense than to just simply allow someone to walk away from the contact and let them keep the cigarettes they have or what have you. So that would be my only suggestion.
I love your suggestion. Linda, what say you?
Yeah, I mean, I think we can definitely look at that. So are we talking about increasing the age to illegal possession to under 21? Or keeping it at 18 and doing a sort of no fine, no penalty classification? Because I think we could keep it at 18 to address Mayor Potembrinik's concern, you know, between the age of 18 and 21. I mean, there's a little inconsistency there, but they are two separate offenses.
That would be my recommendation, but.
Pardon, Chief?
I said, that would be my recommendation is just keep it as is, make it a non-penalty offense and allow us at least take it away from high school age kids. However, you know, if you want my personal opinion, I kind of agree with Mayor Potem that, you know, there are certain things that you, you're asked and allowed to do once you turn 18. And to me, this, I don't know, that, I think we just leave it as is and focus on the retailers and try to get them to stop selling it to underage people under 21. And then only seize it from 18 year olds. I mean, one of the goals of this was to try to get it out of the high schools, right? So that kind of meets that kind of goal where you're, you're getting these high school age kids. They're not allowed to have it. They'll still be seizing, we can still seize that if it's found. And as you pointed out, Mayor, we already have one high school in the city. And, you know, of course, in the future, there'll be more, so.
So I, I don't want it criminalized, which is like, so you, we're allowed to just take it. So, but, but we're already allowed to take it for kids under 18, right?
Well, if you have, I don't know, I, that's a good question. If you have no ordinance at all against the person being in possession of something, then I don't know what right we have to take anything from them. Yeah. So, I mean, it could be, you know, we could outlaw crayons. And, you know, but if we don't have a law against it, then they get to keep their crayons. I mean, it's basically the same thing unless there's something underneath the state law, which allows us to still seize it. Otherwise, it's not contraband.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, so I do think I want it, my position on that would be under 18, take it away from them. But no penalty, no criminal, no.
Oh.
Yeah, I would. So what does counsel think? Jay, I see your face, so you're going first.
Yeah, again, I, I see both sides of the argument, I really do. But, and, and so knowing that Chief is, he speaks for those on the front lines and who are really going to be enforcing it or not enforcing it, I'll kind of defer to what they feel is best. And maybe it is, it's just not punishable, which is fine, but they can still take over possession of it. But I, I just wonder how often that is realistically going to come up other than if there being another offense, a big, a larger offense, I guess I would say, like shoplifting or something else, or a party being busted up. I don't know what the scenario would be. But, yeah, I don't feel completely strongly either way, but I would kind of defer to the judgment of the police department, in my opinion.
Okay, so non, so, so non-criminalized, but take it away, but seize it under 18?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's fair.
Okay, when I see, I see you next, so you're shaking your head, that, that works for you? Okay, Councilmember Anderson and Bronnik are on my screen. So I know Mayor Potem has opinions on this, so we're going to go with her.
So can I ask a question to Linda, please? So can you just walk me through kind of what you see as the options are? You know, like if it stays exactly as it is right now, what the mayor just, just, you know, described, et cetera? Can you just give me kind of the legal way it would work? That will help me.
So currently, I am off mute. Currently, the, we do have a minor in possession, local offense. And that is for anyone under 18. And in that scenario, we have penalty provisions in the code. Off the top of my head, I don't know what they are for juveniles, so I would have to look at that. But there are penalty provisions associated with that municipal offense. So the option is to just completely leave that as is with the penalty provisions in place. The, the second option would be to increase the age of minor in possession to anything under 21 years of age. So we would be capturing within that illegal possession charge those folks who are 18 to 20, anyone under 21. We could have a, a different kind of penalty provision for that age bracket, although I think that gets a little too complicated for our purposes. And then the other option would be for us to eliminate the possession charge completely, which is, you know, what the state of Colorado has done by removing that from the statute. So currently, under state law, they are criminalizing the sale and not the possession. So I think those are the three options.
But the option that the chief brought up was the option of we keep it, you can't have it under 18, but it's not criminalized. So that, I didn't hear you describe that option.
Yes, sorry. And so that last option would be what Chief Wilson just spoke to. And I would want to talk to the prosecutor, Kristi Osmus, about how we would frame that in the code. But I'm sure there's a way that we would do that whereby we could still confiscate, you know, tobacco products. But those folks, those minors, wouldn't be subject to any other, you know, fines or. Yeah, I think it would be fines or community service. So I'd want to talk to the prosecutor about her experience.
Got it. So, so I'll be really clear then, given the, the four options on the table. Option two, which was increasing the age, I am not in favor of that. I think I was, I was clear about that. I'm not especially fond of leaving it as is either. So either eliminating it as described is probably my first choice. But I'd obviously be willing to look at a choice number four that included a non-criminalized approach within the ordinance as it exists today. Does, does that, is that clear?
Yep, yep, thanks, Kath. Yeah, and, and so we'll call it option number four for right now. Mike, Mike, Councilmember Anderson, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, this is tricky. You know, certainly based on the data shared with us, there hasn't been a lot of this in incidents. And what are we really trying to accomplish? And what kind of position do we put our police officers in in terms of trying to be safety officers? You know, bridge the gap in terms of confidence with the community and then taking a pack of cigarettes away from a person? That it's not very comfortable. I would want to hear more from Linda in terms of the legality of the confiscation and why we're doing it.
Okay. Yep, I know, I think, I think what we all want to know is more about the option that, that Chief Wilson presented, the kind of non-criminalized under 18. It would give, they could take it away, but no penalty. It's, and it sounds like we're between either that or being consistent with Colorado state law. Does any council member disagree with what I just said? Okay, can, so what I think we need from staff is kind of an opportunity for, for our city attorney to talk to a prosecutor about that non-criminalized option and then understand how it would, it would be enforced by our police officers to, to allow counsel to make an informed decision on, on where to go on, on the age of possession conversation. Okay, is that, is everyone comfortable with moving forward with that? Asking them to come back with those detail on that, that?
Yes.
Great, great, okay, great. Thanks, everybody. I think, you know, it was, I think this was a thoughtful conversation and I appreciate the good staff work, Austin, on, on bringing this for us. And I, I, I always like a hybrid approach, so we'll see what we come up with here. Or at least exploring it. All right, Austin, did you have anything else? Do you have any for us on this one?
You know, no, thank you. Thanks for letting us drag you in the weeds on this. I know this is probably a really detail oriented conversation when we're doing some stuff that's kind of brand new for us. It's, it's always helpful to make sure that we're in alignment with what you guys want. So thanks for the good discussion.
And Austin, let's own the fact that we dragged you into the weeds. So, but not the weed. All right, anyway, moving on to, and counsel, just for looking ahead, looking ahead, I think we've got to give counsel a time for some kind of a dinner break. I think we're going to move our 2021 Capitol Projects Overview to our next study session. There isn't, that is not a time urgent item. And I do want to give everyone at least a half an hour break. But I want to get through our discussion about, there's two other things I want to get through, guys. I want to get through our discussion concerning the co-changes for common consumption areas. So Jeff is going to take that over. We've got, we've got one oddball, not, not a big deal on the, on the consent. Jen, I want to make sure you're briefed on. And then I'm going to ask Seth to do a very, very, very brief update on the Arts Center Executive Director's search, because I know that's going to come up with all of us before we gather together again to where we are in that process. So let's start off with Jeff. And Jacob, just thanks for your patience and we'll, we'll hear from you at that first meeting in March. So with that, let's move on to Jeff and its discussion concerning co-changes for our common consumption areas. What a pretty picture.
Thank you for a moment of your time tonight. And you'll have a couple of chances to talk about this. So I'll introduce the concept to you and then we'll have, you know, so you can think about it. And then ultimately, we drafted an ordinance that you would consider in, in future meetings that would enable this to happen. But the real concept we want to get in front of you is the idea of enabling common consumption areas at one or multiple locations in the city of Lone Tree that allow for a new type of liquor license that would be implemented locally. Next slide, please. If you haven't heard of them, the Common Consumption Ordinances are a, based on a relatively new type of liquor license. They are now 10 years old, but they're, they're starting to become more utilized than, than they have before. And it's a designated area where patrons 21 or older can consume alcohol, purchase some surrounding existing liquor license establishments. It may be outside, it may be inside. But what it does, you know, in practicality is it extends the control area of a liquor license establishment. And people can potentially buy a drink and take it to another location or within the, the control area. The idea of this, though, however, is beyond, you know, having more regulations around liquor. It's, it's to support local business development. It's a tool for community building and placemaking. And ultimately, we think it's a potentially a very popular amenity for our restaurant community and our residents. So next slide, please. And to give you an example of what these are, there are several, a couple that are popular that are highlighted here include the very first one that happened in Colorado. They titled it Go Cup. It's the city of Greeley, downtown Greeley, and their Downtown Development Authority has partnered with their liquor license vendors to have local events and areas in the downtown area where people can buy a drink, walk around on Main Street or in the local streets and mingle outside of the liquor license establishment. And it was very popular up until, of course, March of this year. And, you know, things have quieted down quite a bit, but they still do exist. And the second one is probably more easy to conceptualize. You know, the town of Mountain Village, which is the base of the Telluride ski area, the newer base of the Telluride ski area. And now an incorporated town has a common consumption area which encapsulates the, the liquor license vendors that are all around the, the base area of the, the ski area where people can buy a drink, but still enjoy their time in the plaza and, and not only be in, or potentially even go in another restaurant or even a retail store with their drink, as long as it's in the CCA and in the controlled districts. So it's a, you might see what that's like a little bit more, especially if it's an outside venue. And that's what I think we envisioned here in Lone Tree more than the inside version. But other versions that you might be aware of, Stanley Marketplace or the Edgewater Food Hall are examples of places that have common consumption areas. The Santa Fe Art District in Denver has explored this significantly. They still don't have one, but you could easily see the Santa Fe Art District having one. The city of Fort Collins, Southlands Mall has these things in it. So it's becoming more and more popular in Colorado. And the next slide will show you that I think we have great options in the city of Lone Tree as well. You know, first and probably the most obvious is, is the vistas. You know, the existing experiments with temporary or expanded liquor license for the COVID pandemic have shown that people want a little bit more space than the interior or the deck part of their building for lingering and hanging around. And we think the vistas would be a very good immediate candidate. And I think the folks at Park Meadows think the same thing. You know, on the right, the Entertainment District makes a lot of sense. There's, you know, at least in the plaza area, four separate liquor license establishments, actually five. And a lot of built environment that could actually create the control zone required for something like this and be a real tool for business development in the Entertainment District. And then as long as we have this on the books long term, you can see the Lone Tree City Center. And it just seems to lend itself very well to the concepts that are already presented in the idea of the Lone Tree City Center. So next slide, please. What, what's now, you know, more into the weeds of this, the, the actual law that was created in 2011 is, was generally allowing for licensing regulation of common consumption areas and then creating the, the three things that would have to happen to make them work. And that's what I'll get into in a bit here, and we'll talk about a lot more in future meetings. To do this, first of all, the city would have to pass an ordinance. And all it really is is enabling ordinance. It doesn't actually create the common consumption area. It's just on your books so that potential vendors can come forward to you and the liquor licensing authority to create a CCA. And to do that, there have to be promotional associations, entertainment districts, and ultimately the license itself. So next slide, please. So the ordinance that's been drafted and you'll be hearing from in future meetings and you'll hear the real details of it is really a relative duplication of the state law, so that it's on our books, so that in the future, a, a potential vendor would want to do this. And why we're bringing this to you today is, you know, if, if there's knowledge of us, you know, going through this process, we can start reaching out now to the business community or places that might want to do this, so that even as soon as this summer, we might have a couple of these or at least one of these in the community to, that people can enjoy. But the ordinance itself that you're visiting is not, is pretty boilerplate. It does establish a variety of new processes for licenses, to renew licenses or to set fees or things like that, but it's actually fairly boilerplate. The things that are more fluid or complicated are in the next three slides. So next slide, please. The first, once, once you pass the ordinance, council by resolution would have to establish entertainment districts. And please don't confuse this with our own entertainment district. The purpose of these districts are only for common consumption licenses themselves. They require an area no larger than 100 acres and contain at least 20,000 square feet of total liquor license premises. The, for example, Park Meadows would qualify in this, in this area, they're, including the major retailers, which we could remove, but that property generally is about 97 acres. So if we wanted to designate Park Meadows as an entertainment district, it'd be possible. And that would just be the underlying authority to then allow for promotional associations to request common consumption licenses. Finally, this, these are approved by city council. It's a resolution of council that's, you know, brought to you to determine what an entertainment district is. And that would happen after the ordinance is passed, by the way. First, you pass the ordinance, and second, then you consider these districts. So, so next.
Jeff, can I just quickly ask a clarifying question on that? I guess when, when you talked about the vistas, I, I assumed that was just that portion of the mall, not the entire mall property. But help me understand, are you suggesting that the entire mall area could be designated that way or a portion within that? Or both?
The way I would, I actually have a slide here that I'll roll really straight for you, Mayor, and it would, it would, you could have multiple portions within the same entertainment district. So it might make sense to do the whole thing as an entertainment district and then work, you know, down from there. And in two slides, I'll give you an example.
Thank you, thank you.
The second would actually be a, so once an entertainment district's created, a nonprofit could be organized between liquor license holders that would own the responsibility for applying for and managing a common consumption area. And you can see a lot of the, the regulations here, it has to be at least two liquor license businesses that join together to apply for this. They hold license, they have the responsibility, they own the control area, and they carry the liability insurance and file annual reports. They're, they're the ones that have the responsibility for managing the area, this, this association. So not only do we have to identify or they have to identify themselves as an association, but they also apply as a Colorado nonprofit and become an entity under themselves for managing the liquor license. This particular association also has to be approved at a public meeting of the city's liquor licensing authority before they obtain an actual license. So the entity is approved and then the license is subsequent to that. So then, next slide, please. And then the final thing, once an association is granted, they, they can apply for a license and be approved by the liquor licensing authority. In this case, a CCA must be with an entertainment district, they must be close to motor vehicle traffic at all times, they have to serve alcohol in special cups designating where it was purchased and stay within the, the control area of the, the, you know, license itself. And then each CCA is approved, just like a regular liquor license at a public hearing of the liquor license authority. And then, Mayor, now I'll get to the, the example. So, so next slide, please. In this case, if we, if the city were to designate Park Meadows as an entertainment district, and it doesn't have to be that way, but if we use the larger property as the entertainment district, you could have multiple promotional associations that apply for licenses within the retail resort area. And in this case, I'm making this up completely, but one association could be the vistas promotional association, and it only encapsulates the businesses within the vistas. That association owns a certain, you know, control area, and they apply for a license to operate their CCA on weekends, you know, that they, they don't want to do it every day of the week, but they do Friday through Sunday, 12, 12 a.m. to 9 p.m., or 12 p.m. to 9 p.m. and, and operate it then. But like on a Monday afternoon, they may not want to operate or be responsible for the same actions, or they may want to go seven days a week. But that would be one association within the entertainment district. And then, although I don't anticipate this happening, that, you know, if there was a desire for special events in the dining hall, that the liquor license holders in the dining hall could have their own association that they would host for special events. Or take it a step further, I've heard that the combination of PF Chang's and Seasons 52 might want to have a promotional association for their own special events or weekend events. And that could be very separate of the vistas with very different operational timelines and, of course, ownership of the, the liability. So, next slide, please. I just want to summarize it for you, and then, of course, the ordinance comes later and you'll get into the, the details there. But the first step is actually crafting the ordinance. Our liquor license, you know, potential liquor license holders can't apply for anything unless we have this on the books. So that's where step one that we're talking about. Step two, once we know that's there, we can contemplate where these entertainment districts might be. That would be approved by city council resolution. Step three would be the actual assemblage of liquor license holders, restaurants that want to be a promotional associations and take responsibility for these areas. And ultimately, they are incorporated and become official at a public meeting of the liquor license authority. And then finally, the, the common consumption area is approved at a public hearing of the liquor license authority. So I've raced through that, but I'm happy to answer questions and we can talk about this a lot more once you're actually seeing the ordinance, if you choose to move forward. So thanks again.
Thanks, Jeff. I, I want to just ask counsel, if there's a council member, do any council member disagree or have objection to moving forward, having staff move forward and exploring this? Okay, sounds like people are all on board to learn more. Is there a specific question that you would like Jeff to answer as he explores this? Any council member have a specific question? All right, well, if something dawns on you, I know Jeff is available by phone and email, so feel free to send it forward. Okay, thanks, Jeff. I think we're all interested in learning more, and it was a great presentation. Thanks.
You very much.
Okay, moving on, I want to quickly ask Kristin to go over our Resolution 21-09, a resolution approving and amended and restated IGA regarding the CARES Act local government distributions. I think we just had some clerical stuff that, Kristin, can you just hop on and quickly explain that?
Yep, thank you, Mayor and City Council. So if you remember back in August of 2020, we were very excited that Douglas County came forward and asked ourselves and the other local municipalities to partner on allocating the CARES money that was received by the county from the state for eligible expenses. And if council remembers, the city of Lone Tree's allocation amount was $1,231,675. We were able to be reimbursed that full amount with eligible expenses in 2020, so we were very excited about that. However, some of the other municipalities and county still have some remaining funds, and so this amended IGA is allowing the extension of the timeframe for spending those dollars to run through December 31 of 2021. And this is a change that was part of the overall CARES legislation. And so the IGA is really just changing that deadline for eligible expenses to be able to be reimbursed through the end of this year. It doesn't apply to the city directly because we did use all of our funding in 2020, but because we're part of the IGA, they're asking for approval by all the parties involved.
Anybody have any questions about that? Pretty straightforward. Okay, great. All right, Seth, can you quickly just give us an update on our Arts Center Executive Director search?
Yeah, happy to. We, so Lisa Rigby Peterson's last day with the city was on Friday. As of today, Paul Ackerman is the interim executive director, and he's going to do a, a great job here in the next few months while we really kick off our search in earnest. So what's going to happen is late last week and, and today, we finalized our, our job description, which is just the kind of the formal document that, that describes what we expect that person to, to do. And then what we do with that is convert that into a, a job announcement, advertisement. And so HR and our Arts Center team actually helped put together a really nice brochure that kind of shows what a great opportunity that we have. And so we're just buttoning that up today. And tomorrow, we'll probably start sending that out tomorrow. We'll definitely share that with, with all of you so that you can have a, have a look as well. But we'll start, we've got a list of, I would say, seven or eight different sites that we're planning to, to post this on, both locally and nationally. We got some good feedback from the Arts Center team about, you know, where on some national arts-focused sites that we'll post on. But I think we put our first review of resumes would be on March 12. That won't be a deadline exactly, but so if there, you know, was an application that came in after that, we'll, we'll still consider it. But that'll be the first time we start looking at, at applications and, and it'll take us, you know, obviously a few weeks to go through, and we'll have a, a process to, to wind through those, which we talked about a little bit, but we need to, it'll really kind of depend on the number of applications we'll set, we'll, we'll drive some of that. So more to come, but the, the search officially begins tomorrow.
Great, thanks, Seth. Okay, guys, I think that's all. Thanks for your, it was a jack, packed-filled agenda again this evening. So we'll see you back a little before 7:00 for our council meeting. Thanks, everybody.